Would you say you want to move after, before the public?
Yeah. Call to order, the New Kent County Board of Supervisors, January ninth, twenty twenty-three, meeting to order. Mr. Tiller, would you lead us in the invocation pledge, please?
Yes, sir. With kind and gracious heavenly father, we thank you for this today, and we thank you for the opportunity to be the representatives here from New Kent County. Be with us now as we conduct this meeting and see that we do it in a manner that is most pleasing to you for these things we ask in your most holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Tiller. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here.
Welcome, everyone, to our annual reorganization meeting. It's the first meeting of the year. Now, I will turn this over to our county administrator, Mr. Hathaway.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. At this time, we will open the floor for nominations for the position of chairman to serve the twenty twenty-three calendar year. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Hathaway?
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we, um, oh, I move that we nominate C. Thomas Tiller as chair for twenty twenty-three for New Kent County Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Mrs. Page. We have a nomination for chair. Is there a motion to close nomination?
Mr. Hathaway, I move to close nominations for C. Thomas Tiller for the chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Ms. Watkins, will you please poll the members?
Mr. Tiller?
Should I abstain or say yes?
So you're going to be a good vote for you?
Abstain.
Ms. Page? Aye. Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
All right. Nominations have been closed. At this time, we will accept a motion to elect a chair for the twenty twenty-three calendar year.
Mr. Hathaway, I move that we accept C. Thomas Tiller for chair of New Kent County Board of Supervisors for the year twenty twenty-three.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Page. We have a motion to elect Mr. Tiller for the position of chair. Ms. Watkins, will you please poll the members?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Abstain.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Aye. Thank you. Congratulations, Tiller.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I have.
Mr. Chair, if I could, I'd just like to thank, uh, over the last two years for the support from all the board, all the staff. We've had a lot going on over the last couple of years, and, uh, New Kent is a, it's been a growing, growing, fast-paced place to be in in the last two years, and, uh, thanks for all the support of this board and again the staff. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
And I'll, I'll add to that, uh, 'cause I know every year, everybody always says that was a really bad year. It was a really hard year, a really difficult year. And I know the last couple of years have been really difficult, and I'm glad you were there for that, Mr. Evelyn, and, and we do appreciate your, your hard work. We really do, and it means a lot to know that we could, um, count on you. So, again, thank you. All right. I guess next on the agenda is election for election of offices for vice chair for twenty twenty-three, and there's a typo on that. So it's for twenty twenty-two. I made the correction. So I guess we open the floor for, um, the office, uh, or the position of vice chair for twenty twenty-three for the Board of Supervisors. Are there any nominations for this position?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Lockwood?
I nominate Thomas Evelyn for vice chair of the Board of Supervisors for a term of one year.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Um, Ms. Watkins, would you have a roll call for the nomination for Mr. Evelyn? Or do we call the vote for? All right. So a roll call to close the nominations? Ms. Watkins? To nominate? Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Ms. Page.
I move that we close nominations for, um, vice chair of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Now, Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Abstain.
Now, motion to elect, thank you, Mr. Lockwood.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lockwood.
I move to elect Thomas Evelyn as vice chair of the Board of Supervisors for a term of one year.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Evelyn?
Abstain.
Now, a motion to elect Mr. Evelyn?
We did that?
We did that.
So we're done then? Move on.
Thank you.
All right, next up, let's, yeah, next on the agenda is election of clerk and deputy clerk for twenty twenty-three. Are there?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Page.
I move to elect Rodney Hathaway as the clerk of the board and Wanda F. Watkins as the deputy clerk of the board, each to serve a term of one year.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Thank you, Ms. Page. Um, Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Now, a motion to elect? Nope. We're done with that. Okay. Uh, next on the agenda is the regular meeting schedule for twenty twenty-three, approval of resolution R-oh-one dash twenty-three. And, Mr. Evelyn, did you have a request for that meeting schedule?
Yes, our work session has always been on Wednesdays. I'm, uh, I'm requesting that, could we move those to Tuesdays at nine o'clock? Uh, if there's an issue with that, that's, that's not a problem, but would help me out with, uh, some of my work commitments.
Same time?
Yes.
So the last Tuesday of the month?
Yes, sir.
While we're talking about conflicts, uh, it was in the packet, but on the October tenth, regular business meeting, I will be out of the country that week. So if we can reschedule it for the following week of the sixteenth?
Would that be the week of the planning commission meeting as well?
It is the same as the planning commission, so that would work.
Could we have a joint meeting if necessary, or?
Week before?
Oh, okay. So if that won't work for you for the work session or the regular meeting, what do, what do we?
No, only for the, the one that's scheduled for the tenth.
Okay, so the Tuesday work session meetings?
So the Tuesday, I would be able to do the, yeah, the Tuesday thing is fine. So if it's a conflict with the planning commission on the sixteenth, couldn't we do the Board of Supervisors meeting on the seventeenth Tuesday?
He's gonna be gone that week.
Yeah, I'll be gone the whole week of the ninth.
That's why you can't do it the next?
Okay.
Well, is that off the week before or the week after?
What's that?
Well, the only thing I would ask about that would be then, if it's something that's, comes up before us that we have to send, well, no, we'd have to go before the planning commission two weeks before anyway, so it wouldn't hurt if we actually met after them to do it the day after.
And that would be two weeks, two weeks before we have our work session?
Correct.
So.
So is that okay with everybody?
So Tuesday, the seventeenth? At six.
So, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Page.
I have a conflict for September eleventh, the eleventh through the seventeenth.
Okay.
And I don't have a suggested date. It's just around you all's schedule.
So you're gone that whole week?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure what I'm doing next week, so I know September the eleventh is way out of the question. Does anybody else have any concerns with the, or a suggestion for a meeting date in September?
Um, if we're gonna avoid the planning commission conflict, the next date would be the nineteenth, Tuesday, the nineteenth, which would end up being one week before our work session.
Would that, Mr. Hathaway, would that be an issue with the work session being that close if something? We think there may be a work session if we're just gonna be a week apart. I mean, we can keep the work session on the schedule, but we'll let you know if there's no need to add that work session. So Tuesday, the seventeenth, then? Is that good?
So we move to the nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth. I'm sorry.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Evelyn?
I have another conflict on the week of the twenty-sixth for that work session in July.
Do you have a suggested reschedule date?
I mean, we only shifted the whole year for.
Yeah.
Just keep asking.
This'll be my last one, I promise. Uh, what, I mean, I'm good to... The nineteenth would be... What'd you, what'd you suggest, Mr. Hathaway, the week after, the week before?
Of July? Your conflict is July what?
The, the week of July?
Twenty-sixth.
Twenty-third through the twenty-ninth. So, I mean, I could, nineteenth or twentieth?
Pick one.
Twentieth?
What about, just out of curiosity, if you're twenty-sixth, we're actually, if we're shifting to Tuesday, it's actually the twenty-fifth that we're not gonna be out. So if you shift it back a week to the eighteenth, we're still on the Tuesday, if that matters?
Tuesday or Thursday would be better. I, I can do either one, whatever works for anybody else.
So Tuesday the eighteenth, just a week prior?
Yeah, that might be better. Um, on the twentieth, we do have a EDA meeting.
Okay. Eighteenth, though?
Tuesday the eighteenth.
I'm gonna guess if there are no other changes, need a motion to accept the schedule has changed?
Amended.
Amended. There you go.
Do we move that or do we, um, do the whole resolution?
Do the whole resolution with the changes presented. Thank you, Ms. Watkins.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I move to adopt resolution R-oh-one dash twenty-three with the noted changes to the, um, Board of Supervisors' schedule, meeting schedule.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Review of the bylaws? Have we ever changed any of the bylaws, Mr. Hathaway?
We have, uh, from time to time, but we are proposing no changes for the upcoming year.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Anybody have a motion for Mr., for the bylaws?
Mr. Chair?
You got what?
Oh.
Okay, sorry.
Mr. Lockwood?
I move to, uh, move that the bylaws be adopted as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Uh, next on the agenda is the consent agenda, items two through seven. So everybody had a chance to look through the consent agenda or have any concerns or changes? If not?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Evelyn?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented, and that it be made part of the record.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Uh, moving on. Next on the agenda, there's no small business close-up tonight, correct? Next on the agenda is a citizens' comment period. Can we have the sign-up sheet, please? Well, no one signed up, so we'll carry on. Next on the agenda is a residency administrator's report from VDOT. Mr. Nguyen?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, Mr. Hathaway, Marshall, Nguyen with VDOT. This past month, we had fifty-one work orders completed. Sixty of them had four call-outs. Been doing regular maintenance through, uh, New Kent, pothole repair, grading non-hard surface roads, uh, shoulder repair, pipe cleanouts, ditching, uh, tree removal, sign repair, and trash pickup. Um, the big, the big emphasis was on December twenty-third, when we had that bad windstorm. We had quite a few trees come down, specifically on two forty-nine. Uh, crews were stuck out there for a couple of hours 'cause the trees were falling in front of them and behind them, but they've gotten that all cleaned up. Luckily, we, you know, we didn't have any issues with injuries or anything. Could've been a lot worse if the cold air had come in faster than it did. So, you know, all my crews were out through the day on the twenty-third, taking care of trees that were down in the road. Um, one item that I want to bring up is, uh, marketplace, the signal. We're working through that process. Uh, we expect something probably by the first of, uh, July, when funding becomes available. Uh, the big, the big caveat to that, when the funding comes available, if a task, if we do the task order, it'll take six or seven months to get the, uh, materials to come in. So it's, it's gonna be a long time coming, getting that, that signal in, but we're working toward that, uh, end, okay? Uh, other thing is a speed study on airport drive. We're working through that. Two ends is, two ends of, uh, airport are thirty-five, and in the middle is forty. We're, we're trying to get that change to thirty-five throughout the whole quarter to make it consistent. So, other than that, I don't really have anything else, uh, to offer y'all. If y'all have any questions, please let me know.
Anybody have any comments, compliments, otherwise? Mr. Steers?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Nguyen, um, the Transportation Safety Commission meeting is this Wednesday, and I won't be there, but I'm gonna send a list of things to Lee Bailey to present to the commission. Uh, last week, there was a ninety-one-year-old pedestrian hit on Kentland Trail, crossing over from Tyshire. Not seriously injured, but injured, but wanted to check to see if we could possibly put in an extra crosswalk through that subdivision going across Kentland Trail. I know a couple of years ago, we had a couple added, and I know you can't put one in every neighborhood, but that seems to be a very busy neighborhood crossing over to the, uh, walking paths, uh, in Brickshire. Also, Flowering Peach, uh, is, Kentland Trail is being repaid from, uh, Courthouse to Flowering Peach, and I had requested to go all the way to the Brickshire sign. Um, and they said they, they don't know if the funding's gonna be there or not, but last week, from Flowering Peach to the Brickshire sign, there were twenty-eight passed potholes now, and some of them are eight and ten feet long. So I would ask that you guys try to get that in your budget to complete the whole section.
Will, will.
Okay. And that's it. Thank you.
Mr. Lockwood?
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Nguyen, um, I had a couple people in the area in Barrensville reach out to me about getting a road turned over to the state. It's currently a private road that, uh, they're, they have a maintenance agreement amongst the property owners. Um, would that be something for Philip to look into, or what would the process be for me to get the, get a start on that?
Yeah, send me the information, and we'll take a look at it.
Okay.
It, it's gonna take, I, I gotta see what the road looks like, for one thing.
Okay.
And, uh, is it non-hard surface? Is it surfaced now?
It's a non-hard surface.
Okay, it's, it's.
It's gonna take some work, and I told them that.
It's gonna be a tough one. I can tell you that.
Okay.
But, yeah, just send me the information. We'll look at it, Mr. Lockwood.
Will do. And, uh, thank you for the cleanup. You guys did do a great job. Um, can I send you a bill for the two trees that we removed on my road?
Ms. Page?
Actually, I, I'm sorry. I did have one more thing, actually, in Brickshire. I was coming out of Rosie's and, no, I wasn't gambling. I got a hamburger. So, when you're coming in, it, towards the, uh, peanut thing, the old, the old road said, get in the right lane to merge onto sixty-four. the old, the old road said, get in the right lane to merge onto sixty-four. There's a sign there that says sixty-four traffic, right lane, and then the right lane disappears because everything shifts to the left lane.
Thought we had, I thought we removed that, but.
I mean, at least maybe ten days ago.
Okay. We'll, we'll, we'll look into that, for sure.
Because I fell for it, too, so. That's all. Thank you.
Ms. Page?
Um, I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you all, um, with the cleanup on, um, the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth of December, along with, uh, um, Sheriff's Department and our Fire Department. Um, it was, um, we had lights, electricity out, and, um, and so Dominion was saying that it would be forty-eight hours, and so just to know that, um, you all worked, um, together, um, to get the trees up and get the lines up, and, um, and the Fire Chief was in constant communication. So, um, just wanted to thank all of the, um, the three of you, three departments for working together to get that done.
Okay.
And Happy New Year to you.
You too.
Mr. Evelyn?
I do not have anything.
Go ahead.
And, and I'm gonna go back to what, not the actual paving of Kentland Trail, but talking about the crossover, crosswalks. To me, if you're coming out of Brickshire, and the Brickshire sign, there's a crosswalk right there at the end of that sign, I believe. Is that right, Mr. Steers?
Yeah.
It just seems like with that big sign there, and the bushes are there, and having a crosswalk, if you're coming out of Brickshire, that's a bad place for a crosswalk, because people could be behind that sign. You'd never see them until they stepped out.
Yeah, that, that's a big problem with pedestrian crossings, visibility and that sort of thing.
Right.
Can we get those lighted signs? You push the button, and it lights up to let people know there's somebody crossing?
That's a whole new, uh, venture in itself, so.
I know, I mean, I see them all over Williams Park. They're all solar operated. They're really, I mean, they're not that expensive to put up, and if you've got some, you know, high pedestrian crossings, it definitely gets your attention if you're a driver and you see that sign light up, so.
Yeah, yeah. I, I agree, but, you know, I've seen it the other way around, too. After they're put up, they flash, and after a period of time, the people driving vehicles don't pay attention to them.
If there's nobody crossing.
If they, yeah, but they.
Even when they flash, they don't pay attention to them.
Okay. Well, can you have it flash and put up the strips that pop their tires? They'll stop next time.
Right.
Okay, well.
That's all I had, Mr. Nguyen. Thank you very much, and we do appreciate all of y'all's hard work over the holidays.
Y'all have a Happy New Year.
You too. Thank you. Um, next, where did I have my agenda go? Next on the agenda is, uh, presentations. Item one. Do we have a presentation for that, Mr. Hathaway? Oh, that's Sherry.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair.
I didn't read it far enough down.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, um, members of the board, um, I present to you a resolution R-O-two-twenty-three, which is a consideration of an exception request under the, um, subdivision, family subdivision ordinance, section ninety-one dash one-twenty-six dash six, six, um, which, um, is a waiver provision for specifying, um, a permanent fifty-foot deeded right-of-way for the Makin Estate Family Subdivision. Um, yeah, I'm gonna pull this up a little bit. Thank you. Let me get this stay up here. Um, the Makin family, um, is here tonight, Mr. George Makin and his brother, Mr. Milton Makin, on behalf of the estate of Catherine Makin. Um, the Makins have requested a waiver, um, from the family subdivision ordinance, fifty-foot right-of-way requirement, through a letter that's included in your packet. Um, if you recall, the, um, you all adopted an ordinance, O-sixteen sixteen, which allows for exemptions to roadway standards for family subdivisions for applicants that are unnecessarily burdened. Um, you can consider this, um, passing this, um, waiver request under your, um, Board Resolution R-O-two-twenty-three. Um, the Planning Commission met on December nineteenth and voted to send you a favorable recommendation to do so with a vote of eight to one. And the Planning Commission and staff both recommend that the proposed lot, one, be served by its own separate driveway. Um, the lots two, um, and the remainder of the parcel be shared, a driveway that's already existing, and then have another driveway, um, proposed for lots three and four to share a driveway. So, there's one existing now, and we're requesting that they have two additional ones for a total of three. And if you have any questions for myself or the applicants, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant or Ms. Adams?
Not really a question, Mr. Chairman, but just a comment. I just looked through the map and the proposal that they put forward, and it certainly seemed reasonable for the, the, uh, proposed amendments that the Planning Commission recommended seemed reasonable to me, anyway. Doesn't look like it's a heavily-traveled road, you know, and a couple more driveways I didn't think would make that much of a difference.
Ms. A, this is, and this the one that they wanted to, one of the driveways to split, to share one entrance, is that correct?
Yeah, um, so, um, Mr. Chairman, the lot one is, is a driveway that they're proposing to go into lot one. I kind of blew this up a little bit to make it more visible. There's an existing driveway here on Taxman Parcel ten dash three. Um, this is the one they want to share between lot, the, um, remainder lot and lot two, and then they want to share a driveway here for lots four and five. So, there's one existing here. We'll want to get two more here. And they don't intend to build houses. They're, um, doing this just to pass land on to their heirs. There's, um, really no intent to build anything right now, so there shouldn't be a lot of traffic in and out of there right now, so.
So, will it be any to build a house? I know they could, as long as there's a family member that wanted to build a house, but they are aware that they want to try to sell it to somebody else. He won't be able to build a house on it for five years, so, how long?
Two-year holding period for the.
Do you have no interest? This is strictly for family, though, is my understanding?
Because it is for family, they're, the driveways or the roadways don't have to be paved? No?
Well, they're asking for exemption?
They're asking for an, 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 an exception to that rule. The subdivision ordinance, um, would require, um, that the fifty-foot access right-of-way shown here be paved and be built to public road standards.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we feel that it's a little excessive, um, to require a family subdivision to build a state road.
Okay, I agree with that.
Anybody else have any concerns or questions? If not, I would consider a motion.
Mr. Chair, I have a motion. I, uh, move that we accept, uh, that we approve Resolution R dash O-two dash twenty-three.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Uh, no other comments? Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Uh, next on the agenda are, is a public hearing, but we cannot start that until seven this evening. So, in the meantime, I think we have a motion. Mr. Evelyn, to go into closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I move to go in closed session pursuant to section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one-eight-point-one of the Code of Virginia for discussion and consideration of a prospective candidate for employment involving the planning director and the assistant county administrator, strater position. I also move to go in closed session pursuant to section two-point-two dash three-seven-one-one-eight-point-one of the Code of Virginia for discussion of the assignment and appointment of the county attorney position.
Thank you, Mr. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn.
Aye.
And Mr. Tillman.
Aye.
All right, I need a motion to come back into. Motion to come back into session, please.
Some moves.
Thank you, Ms. Tavlin. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller.
Aye. Somebody want to, Mr. Hefty?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We need a motion to certify by roll call vote that only the matters identified in the motion to convene in closed session and lawfully permitted to be discussed under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mr. Hefty. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please? Oh, I thought that was it. Thank you, Mr. Lockwood.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller.
Aye. Next on our agenda tonight is a public hearing. Public hearing ordinance O dash zero one dash two three proposed amendments to the New Kent County Code, Section ninety-one dash ninety-four, geometric standards, Section ninety-one dash ninety-five, construction standards, and Section ninety-one ninety-six cul-de-sacs streets. Ms. Sherri Adams.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members. This is a request to consider the proposed amendments to the New Kent County Code, Section ninety-one, ninety-four, ninety-five, and ninety-six. The Planning Commission met on December the nineteenth and forwarded a favorable recommendation to incorporate the two thousand eighteen fire codes into agreement with our subdivision ordinance. And after we consulted with the fire chief and the deputy fire chief, we want to bring these codes in agreement with each other. The fire code requires that the fire apparatus access roads have an unobstructed width of not less than twenty feet. Well, right now, our subdivision ordinance only requires sixteen feet, so we want to bring that up to twenty feet to match the fire code. And the cul-de-sacs need to be of a greater radius to handle fire access equipment. Right now, the subdivision ordinance has it set at forty-five feet, and the fire code that was adopted back in two thousand eighteen has it at a forty-eight-foot radius, so we'd like to bring those into agreement. I have Deputy Fire Chief Brian Bennett here tonight and Fire Chief Opet, if there's any questions, but you can consider this under your resolution, I mean ordinance amendment O oh one dash twenty-three, to bring these codes into agreement with the subdivision ordinance and the fire code. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Adams or the chief or Chief Bennett? All right, if not, we'll have the public hearing. On ordinance O dash zero one dash two three. Nobody's, all right, I will close the public hearing. And again, does anybody have any questions for anybody? That was pretty, I mean, I know at the Planning Commission meeting, that was a cut-and-dry operation there. It went really well. I don't think there were any questions asked after the explanation why.
No questions. How about a motion?
I will accept that as well, Mr. Lockwood. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept or adopt ordinance O dash zero one dash two three.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller.
Aye.
No, Mr. Chairman, I don't, although I would like to congratulate Fire Chief Opet. This is his tenth year anniversary of being on board with New Kent County, and I think he's done an exceptionally great job for our citizens. So, welcome. That's it.
Mr. Lockwood?
I have nothing, sir.
Oh. Ms. Page?
Just happy birthday to Chief Opet.
Happy birthday, Chief.
Anniversary. Happy anniversary, and if I miss your birthday, happy birthday.
Is it your personal anniversary or your anniversary with New Kent County? Ms. Tavlin?
Just one thing. I'm going to be hosting a town hall for District One residents towards the end of January or the first part of February with COGS. So, please be on the lookout for that. We don't have the exact date hit down yet, but please look on my Facebook page and the county's Facebook page, and we'll be getting that date out by next week sometime. So, hopefully, we can give the residents of District One's update on COGS.
I know.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I know a couple of people who live down that way are really excited about that. Next on our agenda are staff reports. Mr. Hathaway, do you have anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I have, there has been some discussion about the Planning Commission and the size of the Planning Commission, and if there is to be further consideration of change, making those changes to the size of the Planning Commission. Our county attorney and I have been doing some research as far as what the process, what would be involved in that process. It would require a public hearing, an ordinance amendment to our code to set the number of planning commissioners that you would prefer, and to set the term limits as well. It is possible to do, but it would require a public hearing.
Did you all have a number in mind?
We will follow the lead. I know there's been discussions, even at the Planning Commission level, I believe, of there being one member from each district as opposed to two members from each district. So, go from ten to, well, actually, eleven to six with the inclusion of the board representative.
All right.
I mean, that brings back memories, because when I first ran eleven years ago, I was asked, what would be the first thing you'd do? I said I would downsize the Planning Commission. I think you remember that, Ms. Hathaway. And then we had a joint meeting with the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, and they ate my lunch. They did. No one wants to give up any authority. So, yeah. But I said back then, you have five people running the county. I don't think you need ten people running the Planning Commission. And, you know, I still say that we don't, I don't think we need ten people there.
I think that would be a good discussion when we get the position filled for Planning Director to be included in that.
Maybe we could talk about it at the work session, Mr. Chair?
The new director will have started by then. Anyway, so we can probably throw her a lot to start with. So, all right, we can put that on the, if you want to put that on the agenda for the work session, that's fine. Anything else? Any other staff?
Nothing.
How about any other business? Any board members have any other business? Now, the fun part, appointments. Anybody have any appointments delegated by district?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Tavlin?
I move to appoint Rod Molina as District One's Representative to the Airport Advisory Commission to serve a four-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-three, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. And I also move to appoint Lily Bram as District One Representative to the Clean County Committee to serve a four-year term beginning January one, two thousand twenty-three, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
All righty, anybody else?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Charles Moss as District Three Representative to the Agriculture and Forestry District Advisory Committee to serve a four-year term beginning January the first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I move to appoint Karen Schuman as District Four Alternate Representative to the Historic Commission to complete a four-year term ending December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. I move to appoint James Wallace as District Four Representative to the Purchase of Development Rights Committee to complete a three-year term ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five. That's it.
Mr. Lockwood? And I have one. I move to appoint Lyle Gleason as the District Two Representative to the Wetlands Board, Chesapeake Bay Preservation Board, and the Dunes and Beaches Board to serve a five-year term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three, and then ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven. That's all. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members, please?
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller.
Aye. Next, appointments not delegated by district. Anybody have any of those?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Joseph Davis as at-large member of the Board of Building Code Appeals, the Board of Fire Prevention Code Appeals, to complete a four-year term beginning January the first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Thank you. Ms. Page, anybody else? Mr. Lockwood?
I move to appoint Ellie Davis as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Community Services Committee to a one-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. I also move to appoint Sarah Miller as a youth member of the New Kent County Youth Community Service Committee to serve a one-year term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Anybody else have any not delegated by district?
Mr. Tiller, I move to appoint Richard Durmar as New Kent County School Representative to the Community Policy and Management Team to serve a two-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you, Ms. Tavlin. Let's see. I'm going to check on that one. All right, that's all. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller.
Aye. All right. Next, regional boards and commissions? Anybody?
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Ron Hathaway as New Kent's alternate representative to the Capital Regional Policy Board to serve a one-year term beginning January the first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And also, I move to appoint Rick Stewart as New Kent's Representative to Century January's Management Board of Directors to serve a four-year term beginning January the first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Mr. Lockwood?
Yes, you can go.
As the alternate?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I move to appoint Supervisor John Lockwood as New Kent's alternate representative to the Central Virginia Waste Management Board of Directors to serve a four-year term beginning January the first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Also, I move to appoint Chief Deputy Bailey as New Kent's representative to the Colonial Community Criminal Justice Board to serve a four-year term beginning January the first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Also, I move to appoint Virginia Pauls as New Kent's representative to the Colonial Community Criminal Justice Board to serve a four-year term beginning January the first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, with the understanding that she is preparing to retire. I move to appoint Leanne McKee as the District Three Representative to the Heritage Library Board of Trustees to serve a four-year term beginning January, beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two, and then July first, two thousand twenty-six. And for the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission has to do
They've sent theirs up.
Representatives for Plan RBA, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so I'm thinking. You already on this. I move to appoint Supervisor Thomas Allen as New Kent's alternate representative to the Richmond Region Transportation Plan Organization to serve a four-year term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. And that is what I have. Oh, and I move to appoint Danny Green as New Kent's representative to the Senior Connection, the Capital Area Agency of Aging Board of Directors to serve a three-year term beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two, and then July first, two thousand twenty-five.
Did you want to continue with the transportation issue? Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Patricia Page as New Kent's representative to the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization Executive Board to serve a four-year term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three, ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. I move to appoint Patricia Page as New Kent's representative to the Richmond Transportation Planning Organization to serve a four-year term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six. Tourism, where's tourism? Is that below that?
So the CVTA, the CVTA, the chairman's that, but you can, Ms. Page, she served on that.
I also move to appoint Patricia Page as New Kent's representative to the Richmond Regional Tourism Board of Directors to serve a three-year term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three, ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
And did you do Plan RBA?
You're already there. You got a point.
That's not up.
Okay, yeah, you're good.
While y'all are discussing that,
Yeah, go ahead.
I move to designate Patricia Page as New Kent's representative to the Central Virginia Transportation Authority to serve a one-year term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
I've got one more.
Okay, Mr. Lockwood?
I move to appoint Patricia Page as New Kent County's representative to the Capital Region Board, Policy Board, excuse me, to serve a one-year term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three, ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. I move also to appoint Patricia.
Mr. Steers might want that one. Criminal Justice Board, Mr. Steers?
I've always wanted to be on that.
Oh, yes. Put him on there. There you go.
All right. I move to appoint Ron Steers as New Kent's representative to the Colonial Community Criminal Justice Board to serve a four-year term beginning January first, two thousand twenty-three, ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Mr. Steers, do you have any? Or am I circling back around? It's been so long.
Any other ones you want?
Not a reasonable one. Is that all, Mr. Chair?
I think so. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Next on the agenda are board staff appointments.
Mrs. Steers?
Yes.
Fire Department?
Yes.
Okay, let's do it. I move to, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Page.
I move to appoint Supervisor Ron Steers as the Board Representative to the Agriculture and Forestry District Advisory Committee to serve a one-year term beginning January the first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. I also move to appoint Supervisor Ron Steers as the Board Representative to the Airport Advisory Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January the first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, Clean County. I move to appoint Supervisor John Lockwood as the Board Representative to the Clean County Committee to serve a one-year term beginning January the first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Also move to appoint Supervisor John Lockwood as the Board Representative to the Historic Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January the first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Ms. Evelyn?
Unless nobody else wants to, I'll do it.
All righty then, nobody jumped up in there. I move to appoint Supervisor Thomas Allen as the Board Representative to Fox and Recreation Advisory Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January the first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Tiller?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I mean, yeah, you choke on it. I move to appoint Supervisor C. Thomas Tiller, Jr. as the Board Representative to the Planning Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January the first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Yeah, he can do this. I move to appoint Supervisor C. Thomas Tiller as the Board Representative to the Social Services Advisory Board to serve a one-year term beginning January the first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. And Mr. Steers, I know you want this. I move to appoint Supervisor Ron Steers as the Board Representative to the Transportation Safety Commission to serve a one-year term beginning January the first, two thousand twenty-three, and then December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Are there any other additions or corrections to that list? Or would you like for Ms. Page to read them over? I'm just kidding. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. Uh, next, and I do not want to do this. It says if the chair does not want to serve as a Director of Emergency Management for two thousand twenty-three, then he or she needs to appoint and designate by making the following motion. Chief, you good with that? Just asking. Did you have somebody else that's in this room that might be? I move to appoint Chief Rick Opet as the Director of Emergency Management pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section forty-four dash one forty-six point one nine, and as Director of Emergency Services pursuant to County Code, Chapter thirty dash one sixty-one.
I just lost service, did you? I said I just lost service. Did you guys lose service?
Nope, I got it right here in black and white on paper.
So how does, so how does he, so he's appointed legally, then he has to appoint himself as director?
As a coordinator?
So, yeah, you need to, yeah. So it's got to be somebody else besides, he's going to, he's going to be the, he'll be the, he'll be the coordinator of emergency services. He can't be, I don't think.
Yeah, but it says whoever is appointed as director needs to make the following motion.
Right.
So he needs to make a motion to direct appointing someone as coordinator.
No, he needs to be coordinator. The chief does.
Chief needs to be coordinator. Mr. Tiller can appoint me as director.
Okay, so I have those two, that one backwards. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Do I need to read that, Mr. Hefty? Or can I say the motion with the change from Chief Rick Opet to Rodney Hathaway?
Let's start back from the beginning so that we're clear on what, who we've appointed. So let's start with the motion to, is it to appoint Mr. Hathaway?
Yes. So do I need to withdraw my first motion?
Yes.
I move to withdraw my first motion.
You can just withdraw it.
I withdrew it. All right, thank you. And now I need to make the new motion. I move to appoint Rodney Hathaway as the Director of Emergency Management pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section forty-four dash one forty-six point one nine, as Director of Emergency Services pursuant to County Code, Chapter thirty dash one sixty-one.
I move to appoint Chief Opet as a coordinator of emergency management pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section forty-four dash one four six point one nine, and as coordinator of emergency services pursuant to County Code, Chapter thirty dash one sixty-two.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Ms. Page?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye. All right, so I think our work is done, other than our meeting schedule. The next regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be held at six P.M. on February the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and the next work session will be held at nine A.M. on January the twenty-fifth, both in the boardroom of the County Administration Building.
Are we just curious, if I may, we corrected, we changed the work sessions to Tuesday?
Tuesday, okay. Stand corrected. Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. With that being said, I guess I can't make a motion for adjournment. I'll accept a motion.
Make a motion for adjournment?
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, would you poll the members?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn? Ms. Page?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
And Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Good job.
Thank you all for coming tonight.
I think I missed one, Mr. Tiller.